Press.
I just want to say, I wish you a Merry Christmas.
Oh, stop.
I wish you a Merry Christmas.
Now, we have the first item on the agenda is the opening.
Happy New Year.
Opening and reading of bids. There are none. Moving on to reports and requests. First item is the accounts payable. It is there a motion?
I'll move.
Is that a motion for acceptance?
Yes, a motion to approve.
And I will second that. A motion and a second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Moving on to the business of the month. Commissioner Dieter.
Yes, we have. George, if you would step up to the podium, please. Due to the business of the McCree's, this, that one over there with the mic.
I hear.
All right. Um, George finally got here. This family works more than all of us combined at this table from early in the morning at five and doing phenomenal donuts. Not that I would eat donuts, sir, but all that, like the case that the family does and working, feeding the community at breakfast, then at lunchtime with a great menu, and then phenomenal dinner at night. So George usually comes in before five and goes home after 11:00 daily, um, all the time. So to have the business of the month for October, it's Carmella's Restaurant. So thank you very much. And just a little background, McCree's Bakery and Carmella's is the result of fulfillment of a dream between the Italian couple who dared to envision big things when they came to America. George Senior and Ayola opened up McCree's and have continued to make authentic Italian ingredients and local storms in their favorite dishes. After that dream finally came to pass in 1978, when she and George opened their doors at McCree's Bakery originally located on LaSalle, the bakery sat next to the other family business, the McCree's Jewelry, which I still have a watch for, by the way. Fifteen years after its grand opening, McCree's relocated the current location and has been there for 23 years. Today, George and Carmella and their four children have continued to carry out the dream of his father and Ayola and have expanded the bakery and include a full-time service, an upgrade in the Italian restaurant, and many other amenities in the area.
Hearing a child, I will tell you that when my oldest daughter.
Okay, okay, hold on. Um, McCree's will continue to do what they do forever and ever, bringing the best of their passion of their family and food together. Again, it's a phenomenal place. They have done a great job for decades and decades in the community. And George, the mic is yours.
Well, thank you very much. On behalf of McCree family and staff, we're honored to accept this great award. Thank you very much.
Not bad for starting out on Diamond Avenue, huh?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate this.
Cool.
Thank you very much.
Give him a round of applause.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Okay, so now we'll do a couple more, then we'll do some pictures. All right.
Did he bring Dieter in?
Always there for something. Okay, we now go to the Citizen of the Month Award for November is Larry Brown. And Larry is not here today unless we have somebody on there. We will do that later with Larry. The next is another great restaurant, Billy Goat Nine and Dine. Anybody from Billy Goat Nine and Dine? Okay. Seeing that, we no doubt, no other people other than the great New Prairie Football Team is the combined Youth of the Month for November. And I believe we have some players and coach. Are you on? New Prairie Football?
Yeah, they are.
Okay, coaching on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you just want to give a, an overview of, uh, some of the guys and the team had a great season, unfortunately, it was a very tough loss, but again, you're building on what you accomplished with, uh, 11-3. So the microphone is yours, young man.
Well, thank you for having us. Over here, we have Jacob Myers, defensive lineman, defensive back Ben Trunk, and offensive lineman Hunter Whiteneck, all critical seniors on our, you know, 2021 team.
All right, thank you very much. Just in a, as a note, the New Prairie won their, um, regional and had a semi-state appearance. They had quality wins over Culver, Penn, Lowell, and had a great campaign in the year of 2021. Their defense was phenomenal, giving up only eight, 10 points a game, which ranked number one in 4A. Their offense scored over 27 points a game, with several times this season, the offense put up over 28 points in a game. The senior class showed tremendous leadership, grit, and toughness throughout the 21 season, whether it was beating Penn at home for the second time in three years, which is phenomenal, or winning on the road at Lowell. So again, we congratulate the entire team. I'll be out there probably Wednesday or Thursday with some trinkets. Make sure the guy sitting on the far left gets a little something to eat. He looks a little hungry there.
Yeah.
Loosen up, man. Laugh a little bit. There you go. Okay? Anybody else from the commissioners would like to wish them?
What a great season. Um, so my, my kids teach at St. Joe's, so we were less thrilled with the beating that you gave the Indians, but amazing season. You represented St. Joe County and the, and the region incredibly well. So thank you for all your hard work and good luck to, from a young man's standpoint, what your future holds next year. Anything you'd like to say from the players?
Got anything to say?
Uh, just thank you for having us. It means a lot. Um, it's been nice, so thank you.
All right. Well, I appreciate, um, during my campaign, my gym in here was closed, so I came out to North Liberty to lift out there at the gym a lot of young, strong men. And I do like the Led Zeppelin shirt, man. I really appreciate you wearing that today. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So I'll see, I'll hook up with you guys, be out there either tomorrow or Thursday.
Very good.
So you, you will get a plaque. Your name will be in our County Commissioners Hall of Fame hallway. And at the end of the year, we also all pick out a, uh, a Businesses Youth and Citizen of the Year Award, and everybody will be invited for that gala. So see y'all tomorrow or Thursday. Thank you.
And congratulations to you two. Best wishes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go Cougars.
Yeah.
Okay, George, I think you are the, uh, only guy to come in today for a picture, so come on up. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Same deal. Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on to Appointment to the Airport Authority Board. I will now open up nominations.
Nominations, Abraham Marcus.
Is there, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will close nominations. Is there a motion to appoint Abe Marcus?
So moved.
Second.
Just I am.
We have motion and a second.
Hear anything back from the burner?
Please signify by saying aye.
No, sir.
Nope, sorry. See, I get, I'm.
I know.
Getting all out of whack.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, Appointment to Historic Preservation Commission. I will now open nominations.
I'd like to nominate Elizabeth Hertle.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will close nominations. Is there a motion to appoint Elizabeth Hertle?
There is a motion to appoint.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have approval of a financial consulting annual service agreement with Sender and Dalton. So this is an annual agreement that we have with, with Sender and Dalton. Their invaluable financial resource, not just to the Board of Commissioners, but the County Council, the Auditor's Office. So this is just our annual agreement with them. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this agreement.
I will second.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, Appointment to Historic Preservation Commission. I will now open nominations.
I'd like to nominate Elizabeth Hertle.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will close nominations. Is there a motion to appoint Elizabeth Hertle?
There is a motion to appoint.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have approval of a financial consulting annual service agreement with Sender and Dalton. So this is an annual agreement that we have with, with Sender and Dalton. Their invaluable financial resource, not just to the Board of Commissioners, but the County Council, the Auditor's Office. So this is just our annual agreement with them. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this agreement.
I will second.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, now we have an order establishing precincts. Mr. Carlson.
Good morning. John Carlson, GIS manager, infrastructure planning and growth with, uh, offices on the seventh and eleventh floor. This year's order of precinct submission, uh, there were 37 precincts that had, uh, boundary changes. Uh, those were due to 18 annexations that affected 21 precincts. There were, uh, two of them that had a boundary change, uh, due to the boundary going through a structure. There were six precincts that changed their boundaries due to the new 21 House and Senate District Boundaries. One of those were, um, a new precinct had to be created because it was also surrounded by a township boundary which could not be crossed. And then there was 11 precincts that needed to be merged, uh, with their adjoining precincts due to Indiana code that states a new established precincts cannot have anything below 600 active voters. So with that, um, happening, our precinct total went from 226 to 215.
Thank you, John. You do amazing work when it comes to, all GIS things, but particularly this. I appreciate your diligence and always making sure that we follow the guidance and, and the statutory mandates that we have. Any questions or comments?
Do we, do we have, do we have an overall map of this or just the individual?
Uh, for the actual order, it's individual maps. That's the only thing the state would like to see. I haven't put an, um, overall map yet together until it's approved.
Okay. So how, how does this, um, with the, our proposed commissioner map that was done, how does, is this a result of the proposed commissioner?
No.
Map or just the regular?
This is something totally different.
Populate, okay.
But as a side note, I did look at the new boundaries and none of the.
How do you like those? You don't have to comment on them.
But, um, all these precinct changes did not affect anything involving the new commissioner boundaries.
Okay. And in conjunction with this, because I know their last, our last election, there was a big issue, especially in my, 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 my district with not a lot of, uh, with our election board, that there were several precincts out in the, in the Walkerton, North Liberty area. Does this affect that or is that always going to be up to the election board? I mean, voter registration and election board per se to make sure there's enough voting spots out there?
No, that's, say, adds something with the election board and voter, uh, registration.
All right.
This is just affecting any of the boundaries according to Indiana code.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Also, I'd like to add that, um, the Indiana Election Division has not approved our submission yet. Um, it should be done this Thursday, and then after that, there is, um, a legal notice that has to be put into the local newspaper for 10 days. Once both of those are expired and done and approved, then our order of precincts comes effective January 2nd.
Awesome. Thank you, John. If there are no more questions or comments, is there a motion?
Uh, yes, there is a motion to approve the changes in some of these precinct boundaries.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have Request Bid Award for Project Number RNS 92102S Supplemental Package Number One, Miscellaneous Road Resurfacing Rehabilitation and County Subdivision Districts One, Two, and Three.
Sky Matters, again, offices on the infrastructure planning and growth, office on seventh and eleventh floor. What this is, is the, uh, award to Reeve Riley Construction for our supplemental pavement patch, package, which is part of the American Rescue Plan. Um, this also includes some paving within several of the county parks. It was approved also as part of the American Rescue Plan. And, uh, we received two bids, and Reeve Riley was the low bidder for the amount of $2,822,383. We've reviewed this and we have funds available from the American Rescue Plan and then also other funds within the county. Also, I will be going back to the Council on American Rescue Plan Board to request some additional funding for this, just FYI. But we've reviewed it and, uh, we request your approval. Questions?
Sky, once again, a great job by Sky. This was, uh, this happened quite quickly, so I appreciate Sky's nimbleness in being able to, um, direct these funds where they can be most impactful for our community. Any questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion?
Uh, there's a motion to approve the changes in some of these precinct boundaries.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thanks again, John.
Thank you very much.
Move on to Bills Passed by the St. Joseph County Council at a Public Hearing Held on December 7th, 2021. The County Council took the following action. Bill 13121 became Ordinance 11421, um, salary amendment for the Health Department. Bill 13421 became Ordinance 11521, um, establishing salaries for adult probation. Bill 13321 became Ordinance 11621, establishing salaries for portage manner. Bill 13521, Ordinance 11721, and Bill 13621, Ordinance 11821, salary amendments for the prosecuting prosecutor's office. And Bill 13021 became Ordinance 11921, the monthly transfer and appropriations. Any questions or comments regarding any of these items?
I just have a question about, um, Ordinance 119-21, because I think it has to do with it's, um, more money in the annual budget, and that's what it's for?
Well, this is our, it's the monthly transfers and additional appropriations. So that's, yeah, so this, this happens every month.
Okay.
For, for that purpose. And typically, you'll see a lot of activity at the end of the month as people try and move money around to, um, to move money around. We'll just leave it at that. So, any other comments or questions from the board? Is there a motion?
Oh, it's a motion to approve all these ordinances.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right. Next, we move on. Humane Society requests approval of a four-year contract for animal control and shelter services for a period January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2025. Counselor, have you had a chance to review this?
I have. Everything appeared to be appropriate. We had to make one small modification to a budget line item to reflect a correct, uh, budget line. Other than that, um, legally, it appears to be appropriate.
I think, and I'll point out, this is a contract, since we do not have animal control per se at the county level, um, we partner with the Humane Society to take care of these services for us, and this is just an extension of a contract that we have had for a number of years with the Humane Society. Are there any questions or comments? I think Jenny is on the call as well, but Jenny, is there anything you'd like to add?
Hello, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you so much for considering our updated contract for the coming years. We've appreciated being your animal control and shelter, uh, for the county for.
If you could please state your, your name and address for the record.
I apologize. Jenny Brown at, uh, 2506 Grape Road, Mishawaka, Indiana. Executive Director here at the Humane Society.
Thank you.
But we appreciate your ongoing, um, commitment to the animals and to the people of our community and look forward to offering these services, uh, for you, uh, in the future.
Thanks, Jenny. Any questions or comments from the board?
Well, I just want to thank that we still are working with, and, you know, with the Humane Society, because I think they do a wonderful job, so I appreciate all that they do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Fleming.
If there are no other questions or comments, is there a motion?
A motion to approve this new contract for the animal control and shelter services for the Humane Society.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. All right. Moving on to PSAP, Request Renewal of the Vertive Maintenance Contract. Mr. Ray.
Hold on, I'm trying. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Uh, good morning. Ray Schultz, Executive Director, PSAP, Office at 58266 Downey Avenue. In front of you is a renewal for contract, uh, for our UPS backup batteries that we are required to have both here at Downey Avenue and the Backup Center at 701 Sample Street in the event of a power outage. Um, if these batteries kick in, uh, in the meantime, uh, ahead of the generator, uh, so it's an essential, uh, mission-critical, uh, portion. There are three options in the proposal. I would suggest that we do the third option, which is a five-year contract. It allow, it's still billed annually, so, um, it does not, um, it doesn't, uh, force us to pay upfront, and, uh, it saves us 3% overtime.
Any questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion?
There are motion, there is a motion to approve the renewal of the Vertive Maintenance Contract.
At the five-year level.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, Request Renewal of the Edge IT Contract.
So we have contracted with, uh, Edge IT for the last four years to be our, um, backup, our IT backup. Um, we are to a point now where we do not need to prepay for hours as we have in the past, and we've, we've paid monthly. Um, we've, we've bought a section of hours every year. Uh, we're at the point now where we don't need that, but we do need their services because, um, they designed a portion of our network that, um, only they can do at the moment. It requires a specialized certification that, that we do not have, uh, the ability to gain right this second. So this basically puts them on standby. It gets us a better rate, uh, than if we would not have a contract and we would just have to call them, um, as needed. So it's, there's no, there's no monthly fee. It's only, it's a as-needed contract.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to renew the Edge IT Contract.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to Purdue Extension, Request Approval of Extension Contractual Services Agreement.
Good morning.
Good morning. Um, I'd like to introduce myself first. I'm Julie Jones, and, uh, I, I'll be serving as interim County Extension Director for the next few months until that position is filled. I'm actually from Lake County, uh, so I'll have responsibilities in both counties, um, probably for the next three to six months, and then I hope to come back and introduce you with our, introduce you to our permanent Extension Director. Um, what brings me here today, though, is our annual contractual services agreement. As you know, the Cooperative Extension Service is a partnership between local government and state government in the form of, of the local county government and our state land grant university, which is Purdue in Indiana. This document outlines the partnership, and we ask that, that you approve and renew it to continue our relationship.
Thank you, Counselor. Have you had a chance to?
I've had an opportunity to review it, and everything seems appropriate.
And this is, this is a, we do this every year. It's an annual renewal. We've got a great partnership with Purdue Extension. They do great work here in Sancho County, and we're very fortunate to have them. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion?
There is a motion to approve the Extension Contractual Services Agreement.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if you have any questions about our programs or our staffing as we move forward, um, please feel free to reach out.
Will do.
Thank you.
Have a great day. All right, moving on to Infrastructure Planning and Growth. The first item is the Consent Agenda. We've got solid proposals for 2021-22 season for Penn High School, South Bend Community School Corporation, Town of Lakeville, and St. Joseph County Parks Department. This is a continued great partnership. This is the way that we can, we can leverage resources to help, um, non-governmental or quasi-governmental entities, um, purchase materials at a lower cost than what they could. Um, so I think it's, it's a great partnership. Did I miss anything, Sky?
You got it.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, move on to Request Approval of RNS 92101D Maintenance Asphalt Overlake Community Cross Expansion Grant Program Change Order Number Two. Final Change Order, Mr. Sky. Yes, this is the final change. Name and address for the record, too. Sorry, I should have done that the first time. Sky Matters, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the seventh and eleventh floor. This building, uh, what we have, uh, before you is the final change order for our community crossings paving project that, uh, occurred this year. Uh, this, uh, change order is for $215,684.37. And during the project, we had to increase some of the items, and then also we ended up increasing the, uh, length of some of the paving to, uh, finish out some road, road areas where it was needed. Uh, this is about a 9% increase in the overall cost, and, uh, we have the funds from, uh, available, uh, accounts, and we've reviewed this and recommend your approval. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this community crossings matching grant program.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelny, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next up, request approval, change order number two for contract with Jennifer Henthorn. Mr. McNamara.
Little shift here. John McNamara, County Surveyor, office on 7th floor. This is a contract for a person who's doing the scanning of the surveyor's records. We have been getting comments from around the state for the availability of these records and the accessibility. And since St. Joe County is, is known as, as one of the most progressive in this particular area, and I would like to continue it with her. She is now scanning old surveyor field books, which the, some of the newer surveyors use. And this, especially with the pandemic that went on, they don't have to come in. It's on the website. They can just, on the portal, they can just access it right from their, from, right from their office. So it's a, it's a big, it's a big thing, and I would, I would appreciate the, the approval of this.
I want to applaud John's tech-savvy nature in making this happen. We really are, we are a leader across the entire state, and I would guess the region, with making things available to people, because we want to try and make it as easy as we can for individuals to conduct business with St. Joseph County. So thank you, John, for your leadership there. Any questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this change order number two for the contract with Jennifer Henthorn. Henthorn.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thanks, John. Next, request bid award for project number RNS 92102S Supplemental Package Number One, Miscellaneous Road Resurfacing Rehabilitation and County Subdivision Districts 1, 2, and 3.
Sky Matters, again, offices on the Infrastructure Planning and Growth, office on 7th and 11th floor. What this is, is the award to Reith Riley Construction for our supplemental pavement patch, package, which is part of the American Rescue Plan. This also includes some paving within several of the county parks. It was approved also as part of the American Rescue Plan, and we received two bids, and Reith Riley was the low bidder for the amount of $2,822,383.76. We've reviewed this, and we have funds available from the American Rescue Plan, and then also other funds within the county. Also, I will be going back to the Council on American Rescue Plan Board to request some additional funding for this, just FYI. But we've reviewed it, and we request your approval.
Thank you, Sky. Once again, a great job by Sky. This was a, this happened quite quickly, so I appreciate Sky's nimbleness in being able to direct these funds where they can be most impactful for our community. Any questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion?
There's a motion to approve the supplement package number one.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have request bid award for project number RNS 92103S Supplemental Package Number One, Miscellaneous Road and Resurfacing Rehabilitation and County Subdivision Districts 1, 2, and 3.
Sky Matters, again, this is also the second part of that American Rescue Plan funding for pavement. This is another supplemental package. We ended up splitting it up to bid in two separate packages to try and keep the size of the contracts down a little bit. We received two bids. Reith Riley was the low bidder, again, in the amount of $2,659,111.27. We have reviewed this bid and have funds available from American Rescue Plan and other accounts in the county, and we've reviewed this and recommend your approval.
Any questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this American Rescue Plan.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sky. Next, we have request approval of Portage Manor New Campus Designing Cost Projection, MKM Architecture and Design. Mr. Frank.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Frank Fotia, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the 7th and 11th floor of this building. Before you is a proposal for a study with MKM Architecture to determine if a new Portage Manor building was built, what would it cost, and would it be able to be self-sufficient and be able to house not only the 140 beds that we have at the current Portage Manor, but could we add on even more and make it self-sustainable? In working with the council in trying to resolve some of the budgetary issues, the council has set aside $50,000 from ARP funds to start gathering some of this information as they continue to work with the board to figure out how we can make Portage Manor sustainable and to be able to continue its mission well into the future, seeing as if we were to do nothing, it would not have probably more than about three years to go before it was completely out of money. So in working with council and the board, trying to figure out all of the options that are available so that we can continue this important mission.
Thank you, Frank. I know this is conversations that took place during the budget cycle with council as well, that the proposed rehabilitation of the existing facility did not seem tenable. So we thought, well, that's, what would it cost if we had to go into a structure that could better serve needs both financially and for those participants at the manor? Questions or comments from the board?
Sure. Frank, these people are from Fort Wayne?
They are. They are the company who worked with Allen County to build their county home a few years ago, and they completely specialize in building long-term care facilities. That's the only thing that they do.
Then with this, we're only talking about the current building. We're not talking of land development anywhere else on the property itself. It's just, they're looking at the feasibility of...
Building a new building and not tearing down the current one. So it would be a different footprint on that facility. Our hope is that, working with the county and the city, we could find a use for that building. Unfortunately, having been 115 years old, it does not meet Medicaid waiver requirements or the standard of care that the government or really anybody expects for serving.
I'm aware of all that, but they're just working out, we're not looking at developing other areas of the land out there that we own, correct?
No. The scope of this study is strictly 100% a long-term care facility to house the residents that live at Portage Manor.
Okay. And then in the January timeline of review finding, is that, is that encompassing just the group itself, or there will be input from theoretically council commissioners, anybody else, or that's all in-house, the timeline there? That's just them?
I believe that that is just them, though I'm sure they will welcome any type of input. They have already gone out and spent about an hour and a half walking the facility, meeting the residents, talking to Mike Eby, to kind of get a sense of the population that they serve. They will, I imagine, be coming back with options, but I am sure they will welcome input from any commissioners or council.
If you have a contact, contact, I'd like to hook up with them. Thank you.
Yep.
Me too. I would like that, because I'd like to see what the difference really would be in upgrading the facility that's already there, the building, because I've always liked it. My mom has always liked it, and she would donate, and I'm not sure a new one would be good, I think. So I'd like to see.
Sure. So we have the, Bonavita did a study to figure out how much it would cost to renovate that building. This is a study to see how much it would cost to build a new one, and then we can compare.
Well, let me know then, so that I know, because I've been trying to do that for the last four years, trying to update everything and make things better, so.
This is just an information gathering proposal, so that...
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Not at this time.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second. You have a motion, a second, a dozen.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
No.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye.
Two ayes, one nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Alrighty then. Request approval of Health, IPG Purdue Extension, Billing Department, and Warrant Space Planning and Probable Cost, CDS, Architecture and Design.
Yes, so this is a proposal to look at what it would cost if we renovated the lobby building to completely house the health department on all three floors, and then reshuffling some of the offices in this building to take the space that health would be vacating, moving warrants, Purdue, and the building department into the county city building.
I think this kind of fits with long conversations dating back three or four years ago about how we best utilize that space and try and combine resources, so they match up a bit more, more coherently than they currently do. Any questions or comments from the board?
Sure. Frank, does this also include, I think there was conversations since I've been here of the Purdue people possibly being, moving out to the Forage Fair? Is that part of this discussion?
That is not part of this discussion. We had in 2017 a proposal for bringing the Purdue Extension out to the fair. That work's already done. Back then, it was $800,000, so you can imagine what it would cost post-pandemic with construction good costs what they are. If that's something council and commissioners wish to pursue, I would suggest now that we have a new fair board and will be bringing on a new Extension Director in the next few months, putting a pin in that discussion until both of them are hired in here and are able to participate in that conversation.
Sure. I'll be happy to do that.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, request approval of professional service proposal for conduit and fiber extension, Choice Light, Inc. Mr. Bill.
Good morning, Bill Shaleo, Economic Development Director with offices on the 7th and 11th floor, however it sounds like, maybe somewhere else in the future, which could be exciting. Here today, we have two proposals. Both were approved at the Redevelopment Commission meeting at 9:00 today. The first proposal is a professional service proposal with Choice Light to provide conduit extension services in the amount of $11,032 for construction of a conduit to service Gavelon Grain. Gavelon Grain's located out on Walnut, between the tracks, between the Norfolk Southern tracks and the South Shore tracks. This would provide conduit. We would pay for half of the project. Choice Light would pay for the other half. So Redevelopment Commission approved this earlier, and we'd ask for your approval, please.
Thank you, Bill. And I will add that this, slowly but surely, we are trying to extend our reach, our fiber reach across the county, because this is as valuable a resource as we are able to, to provide our residents and our businesses. So it's great to see we can continue to move that forward. Questions or comments?
Is that, is that common of us picking up half of...
So one of the things that we had talked about with the Redevelopment Commission is that we would pay for these kind of contracts that had kind of special circumstances, if you will. So we did pick up entirely the cost to connect from the fiber to Bendix Woods County Park. That was a county situation. What we've determined is there may be other situations, you know, located between train tracks, a farther distance off the road, things like this, where we might provide half of the funding in partnership with Choice Light. We don't have a set amount that we're going to do, but the Redevelopment Commission, through our partnership, has suggested that's something that we should consider. When we get to the town loop into the town, New Carolina, which is kind of the phase two of this project, we'll probably be more involved connecting the township fire department, and Olive Township, and the library and school board. So we'll probably see more of those kind of connections, but this is for a special service, a special connection-type service.
Right, and is that the other company involved? Are they a for-profit entity?
They are.
Okay. Then what's our line of demarcation? If you can see where I'm going at of whatever LLC, hey, this company got some fiber for free, where do, where do I come in at?
Yeah, so if you, they're in the, in the packet, there's a map attached. What we're doing is connecting from the fiber line under the train tracks, and then Choice Light, through their partnership with Gavelon, is making that regular or rest of that connection. When we built the line back in 2017, we actually dipped the, the main conduit on Walnut 12 and 1/2 to 15 feet under the tracks. Had we been a little different and more intentional with our design at the time, we would have had a handhold in between those track areas or a pit that you could have accessed that, and then we wouldn't have had this extra cost, if you will. So some of this was, goes back to just design of the original project.
I get to understand that. But do we have a, a threshold of when we're going private government property that, hey, we're not going to go over $70,000 if we have to help out, or...
Yeah, no, we don't, we don't have a threshold. Generally, the connection points in our conversations with Choice Light, based on the distance back of the buildings, is going to run about $10,000, may run a little more, may run a little less, just based on location. And generally, that amount is within the, the typical contract amount that somebody would pay. But if it's a far, a bigger amount, I, we'll just have to go on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, well, at the end of the day, it would be the vote of your Redevelopment Commission, and then us if it was...
Certainly, yep.
A, a big, big ticket item that way. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Yep.
No further questions.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the professional service proposal.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Lastly, request approval of professional service agreement, Old Cleveland Roadway Improvement Project Construction Drawings, Abbot Marsh Consultants, Inc.
Before you today is a professional service proposal with Abbot Marsh Consultants, Inc., to prepare construction drawings for a section of Old Cleveland Road, generally between, or just west of Die Dam to the City of South Bend limits, which is the start of Nims Parkway. These improvements will be made in conjunction with new development, south of Olive Road, or south of Old Cleveland Road, I'm sorry, in the future. But what we want to do is get construction drawings prepared during the winter, so that when this project was ready to move forward, we would have plans and specs prepared. This is part of a bigger agreement that the Redevelopment Commission approved at their last meeting to use surplus TIF funds to make these road improvements. So we'd ask for your approval of this contract and a not-to-exceed amount of $29,400 to get this work completed, so we're ready to bid when the project's ready to move forwards. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Bill. Also, this is an exciting project that we can provide the necessary infrastructure there. I think it'd be very beneficial, not just for this project, but potentially for future growth as well. Questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the service agreement for the Old Cleveland Roadway Improvement Project.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelni, how do you vote?
Aye.
That takes us to the old business portion of our agenda, and there is none. Brings us to public comments. Are there any public comments? Please note that you're limited to three minutes.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name's Eric Kozmaske, reside 56921 Hollywood Boulevard. My wife Diana's going to hand you all a packet. I'm here today because of the traffic, traffic issue on my road. I live on Hollywood Boulevard between Grant Road and Western Avenue, or State Road 2. This is, this all started with the construction of the Martin Store on Mayflower Road. From the beginning, planning stages, we asked that there would not be an entrance on the Hollywood Boulevard in fear that would impact our neighborhood in a negative way. We even had a signed petition asking to keep the entrance closed. You guys have that signed petition with you. The store has three other access points, two on Mayflower, one on Western Avenue, so it's not likely they really need that back entrance. We were assured that the access was only for the residents living directly behind the store, and if it did change the traffic through the neighborhood, they would address the issue, because they were committed to do the right thing, quote. Well, here we are four years later, after the store opened, ongoing complaints, and nothing has been getting done by Martins. Jessica Clark was against the back entrance from the beginning, and when problems started, she sent a letter to Martins about everybody's concerns, but they never responded. You have that letter also. I have met with Dave Nizgonsky, Bob Krasinski, Jessica Clark, Sky Matters, and they're all in agreement that this has become a safety issue with the traffic caused by the back entrances of Martins. But they tell me that the commissioners are the people that's going to have to take care of this, to move forward with the plan. We had a traffic study before the store and after the store. 2015 before, we had 254 cars a day, average speed 35 miles an hour. 2019, it went to 621 cars, average speed 39 miles per hour. Weekends are way worse right now, easily 800 a day. Truck traffic went from seven trucks a day to 42 trucks per day. In September of this year, Bill Redman had his traffic division set up a traffic speed logger, and it captured vehicles doing excess of 50, 51 miles an hour. You have a copy of that also. I highlighted the, there was four vehicles that hit at least 50 miles an hour. The first picture you have shows the traffic that is so heavy coming out of that Martins back entrance. You can actually see the darkness and wear of the pavement from the constant in and out of that back entrance. I also have other pictures of places in the county where they had issues, and the county closed off them roads. There were Hattington Drive, Widener Lane, and Brown Lane, were obviously areas where neighborhoods had issues, and they, they actually blocked it off in one way or another.
Sir, your three minutes are up. Thank you so much for your comments.
So we can, obviously, we won't get anything accomplished this minute, but I think we'll, we've got this information, and we can get with Sky and figure out what, what we can do.
I will also, after the meeting, I'll come and talk to you and...
Sure.
Meet with you. Thank you.
Because I know this has been a long, longstanding issue with, with that, and then council, anyway, so we can, we can try and do what we can.
I really would appreciate it. It's getting, it's getting ridiculous anymore.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Hearing and seeing none? As a reminder, we will have a, next week's meeting will be a claims meeting on the 21st. And then there'll be a claims meeting that last week of December as well. But if there are no more comments, a motion to recess is in order.[1768.82]